All right. So some of you have stayed. Thank you so much for coming to joining our forum today. And we just heard from the candidates for the mayor role. And right now, we're meeting the candidates for the city council, council for Irvine. So let me, so for those of you who have just joined us today, there will be three sections for this, for the forum. The first one will be self introduction where the candidates will have two minutes to introduce him or herself. And then the second section will be question and answer, which each of you will have one minute to answer pre-selected questions from our community members. And the order will be rotate, will be rotated throughout the questions. And the last portion will be your closing statements where we'll reverse the order from the introduction. So, and the order of the introduction is done by our candidates confirmation for attending today's event. And first I'd like to, and when you hear your name, please wave to the audience. The first one is Larry Agron. Thank you. And we have Dr. Kathleen Tresseder. Thank you. Scott Hanson. Thank you. Navid Sadiq. Thank you. John Park. Thank you. And Anthony Kuo. Thank you so very much. All right, now, let's get started. We will start with council member Larry Agron for his introduction.
Thank you. And thank you so much to all of the hosts for hosting this wonderful, what has become now traditional candidate forum. I dare say the best candidate forum typically held in Irvine. With that, I want to simply introduce myself as somebody who is a longtime resident and longtime servant on the city council and is mayor here in the city of Irvine as well. We came to Irvine when my wife was accepted to UCI Medical School at a time when very few women were being accepted to the medical school. But we managed to come down here. She was part of that breakthrough class. We established our family roots here. And now we are three generations who have been in Irvine and will continue to be in Irvine. When I first came here, we were a city of 50,000 people. We've now grown to one of the 50 largest cities in the United States at over 300,000 people. I'm proud to have established a record on the council for open space preservation, for establishing the Great Park while defeating the threatened county airport that would have been here. But we have a lot of problems still to face here in the city. I know we'll be talking about those today. I hope and believe that my experience and my skills will allow me to solve those problems along with the engagement of the rest of the Irvine community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Larry. Now let's welcome Dr. Kathleen Tresseder.
Hello, everybody, and thank you very much for hosting us for this town hall. I really appreciate it. So I am an educator and a scientist. Specifically, I'm a professor of biology at UC Irvine. And I never expected to run for office. This was not an ambition of mine. But I have been inspired to run by talking to my students and hearing about their experiences in Irvine and also hearing about what their families are experiencing in Irvine. I feel like I can help Irvine residents. And I just want to tell you one story of one of the students who inspired me to run. So when I was a new professor at UCI back in 2005, I got an email from a young man named Dev. And Dev was 12 years old and he wanted to do a science fair project. And he thought that my lab would have the equipment to help him. And I had to really think a lot about this. It's not very common for middle school students or high school students to come to UCI to do work. But I decided that I wanted to take the risk. I myself know I am where I am because of mentors who helps me very early on. And so I wanted to help him. So he came to my lab and he did his science fair projects. And he, each year, he stayed for three years. And each year, he went to the California State Science Fair and won awards. And so this is a picture of him in one of the science fairs. And then he went on because he had these awards. He was able to go to UCSC for his grad, for his college degree. And then he stayed at UC, oh, she went to UCSD for his medical degree. And so this is a picture of him now. This is from last year. He came up from San Diego to an event that I was holding. And he is now a family physician. And he is inspired to also work on public policy for health. And I want to do this. I want to help UCI connect with the Irvine community in similar ways to improve education. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now let's hear from Scott Hanson.
Thank you. It's a delight to be here. I'm Scott Hanson. My family has lived in Irvine for 22 years in Turtle Rock. Both of our kids grew up here. Our daughter was born at Irvine Regional Medical Center on Sand Canyon Road. That's how long we've been here because now it's Hoag Hospital. My wife's a teacher at University High School. She's chair of the World Languages Department where they teach Spanish, Mandarin, Latin, and French. I was born in California. My dad was a Navy officer. Every year or two years, we'd move to a new state or a new city. So we didn't have set roots. We lived in Rome, Italy. We lived in Tehran, Iran. And finally, I graduated from Coronado High School on Coronado Island across from downtown San Diego. So not too far away. Educational background, I have a master's degree in mechanical engineering. I worked in a startup in Santa Barbara. We, we developed algorithms and software to make cars and airplanes lighter and stronger. So if you go out to one of the major streets in Irvine, chances are good if you see a General Motors car or a Ford car drive by, odds are good that that car is lighter and more fuel efficient because of some of the work we did way back when. I went to law school. I was a partner in a large law firm in Los Angeles. And I worked in-house at Western Digital, Fortune 500 electronics company when it was headquartered here in Irvine. More recently, I got a master's degree in innovation and entrepreneurship from HEC Paris, the number one business school in Europe. And I run a technology law practice in Irvine. My daughter and I are about to get a US patent. So I'm a very proud dad as well. Thank you for the beautiful opportunity to be here today.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Okay, next, please welcome Navid Sadiq.
Hello, thank you for having me today. And thank you to the South Coast Chinese Cultural Center as well as the Irvine Chinese School for hosting this event. My name is Navid Sadiq and I'm running to represent you in Irvine City Council. I'm currently a second year college student at Irvine Valley College. I'm planning to major in computer science as well as minor in political science as well as in economics. Um, I've lived in Irvine for my entire life, a bit over 19 years now. And as such, I've been through the entire public school system in Irvine, all the way from elementary school to high school. And I'm continuing my education in Irvine at the moment at Irvine Valley College. What inspired me to run for office was the fact that I always, I've always had a yearning for the public, for serving in an elected office. I've always wanted to give back to my community and make sure that and help my community out as well as make sure that my community is always prosperous. Some of the issues that I've concerned about are that in many places in Irvine, residents only have access to one internet service provider, and that is Cox Communications. That's actually what inspired me to run in the first place. As I've been incredibly frustrated by the fact that we have been stuck with Cox for all these years at my house. And we haven't been able to switch to a, an alternative internet service provider because of the monopoly they have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now let's welcome John Park.
Okay, hi, everybody. My name is John Park. First, I want to thank South Coast Chinese Cultural Center and of course, the other great organizations who are co-sponsoring this event. You know, I would have said something, a really nice greeting in Chinese, but my wife advised me not to do that. So I won't. We are, we've been residents of Irvine for 22 years. All three kids born here, ranging from nine to 19. And Scott, my oldest was also born in Irvine Regional as well. So we're a pretty typical Irvine family. And yes, we have a minivan. Currently, I am serving as the Irvine Finance Commission Chair in my second term as the chair now. I'm a very active authoritarian. I sit on a couple of nonprofit boards. My day job, you know, I grew up in corporate America, had a couple of executive positions in Fortune 1000 companies. And about 17 years ago, I started my own business, an advertising agency out of my home office. And now it's a seven-figure operation. We're very proud of that. So there's a couple of things that you should know about me at the core. First is, we love Irvine. We don't believe the sky is falling. We love this city very much. The second is, I believe that we're in a really great transition to becoming the largest city in OC and one of the largest cities in Orange, in the country. And so we have big top-level topic categories that we must focus on. This includes safety, infrastructure, transportation, refocus back to our master plan, city personnel numbers, and much more. At this time, I truly believe we need a pragmatic, business-minded, and a solutions-driven council members sitting at the dais and with a clear vision for the future. And I believe with my track record, I'm one of the, one of those potential members. A true steward, if you will, of this great city who will keep Irvine, Irvine. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. Now let's welcome Anthony Kuo.
Thank you so much. Dajia Hao. My name is Anthony Kuo. I grew up here in Irvine. My family chose to make Irvine their home here in Woodbridge in 1978. So we've been around a long time. My family owned one of the first Chinese restaurants here near UC Irvine called Chinatown. And now we are a bustling metropolis that's just full of diversity. And there seems to be a Chinese restaurant on every corner and one constantly opening. So we're, we're getting to try new things every week. I've been on the city council for almost four years now. Before that, I served our community for nearly eight years as a city commissioner. And I've pretty much spent a lifetime giving back to Irvine in a variety of ways, whether it's been on charity boards or just different community service opportunities. It's important to have perspective. And that's one of the things that I bring and have brought to the city council over the last four years is, one, the perspective of the youth, two, the perspective of listening to others. We heard in the previous session with the mayoral candidates about community engagement. Rather than having community engagement come to city hall, I've spent the last four years going out to the community. On any given night, you can see me at a basketball game or a football game or a school play or a PTA fundraiser, because that's where our families are. In fact, the other night, I got to go over to Irvine High School where I really felt like I had a small hand in delivering badminton back to the community. So when you go out into the community, you can truly hear their perspective. And it's been a real pleasure to serve the last four years delivering for Irvine and working hard for our community. And I hope to earn your support for a second four years so I can continue delivering on all the amenities that make Irvine's quality of life so remarkable. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for your introductions. Now we're going to move to the pre-selected question section of today's forum. And again, as a reminder, you have a minute to answer these questions. And the same question will be asked for all of you and the order will rotate. And the first question will be answered by Larry first. Okay, so the first question is, if elected, what are the top three priorities you want to accomplish during your term in office?
There are three very important things we need to attend to. Following the pandemic, it became evident that we need to establish a public health department here in the city of Irvine. It can start out as an office, but it needs to be a well-staffed, ultimately, public health department, including school nurses, public health nurses, medical professionals, to see to it that the health and welfare of the community is secure. We also need to attend immediately to the All-American Asphalt Fiasco. The fact that we have a public health emergency in the northern part of our city because of an industrial polluter requires immediate attention, much more aggressive attention than has been given so far. And finally, we need to talk about the Orange County Power Authority and its failure at this time.
Thank you very much. Same question for Kathleen.
Thank you very much. So my first priority will be education. And so I've seen firsthand how connections between UCI and the community can improve education. I would like to cement those links between UCI and city hall. I don't believe there's been a city council member ever who's been from UCI. I would like to do that. I would like to use UCI to bring in summer camps, internships, after-school programs to help boost the educational structure in Irvine. I'd also like to take advantage of all the expertise we have here in UCI, like for example, public health. I also would like to shut down the All-American Asphalt Plant either through condemnation or a land swap. And then finally, I would like to fight intolerance like anti-Asian hate and hate towards other marginalized groups. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Same question for Scott.
Thank you. So the economy in California is beginning to slow. I learned to watch state revenue numbers when I was chair of the Finance Committee in the Irvine Unified School District. And the way our schools get by, we're one of the lowest-funded school districts in the state of California per student. And the schools get funding from, they're able to survive because the city contributes money to the schools. The Irvine Company contributes. Irvine Public Schools Foundation contributes. And there's slows down for the city to just not too long ago at the latest budget downturn. So I want to make sure that our city council, when the revenue slows, is going to continue to fund our public schools with its contribution.
Thank you very much. Same question for Navid.
Thank you. So one of the one of my first, on my first day in office, I would introduce, I would get the laws off the, I would repeal the laws that allow Cox to perpetuate its monopoly in Irvine. Currently, we have laws on the books that ensure that are very favorable towards Cox and allows it to easily keep its monopoly. I would immediately repeal those as well as provide incentives for other internet service providers to enter the area. I would provide relief to the pain at the pump that's been hurting all Irvine residents by getting rid of the sales tax on gasoline. I would increase the size of the city council as well as switch to district elections so that every person may elect a representative of their choice and that will actually fight for them and represent them the best of their ability. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Same question, John.
Okay, thank you. So my first, you know, top three priorities are first and foremost, public safety. I think that we have to make sure that our public safety is ready for the growth that we've experienced as well as the growth we're anticipating. Top-line categories are the police as well as fire. And you know, we've had, for example, two robberies in the last 72 hours. One was at Rite Aid, actually within the last week, one was at Rite Aid, the other was at the Spectrum. So we're seeing things now that we never saw in Irvine. It's a public safety first and foremost. Second is growth of our reserves. Currently sitting at about 20, 21%, about $45 million. I think we should grow that. And then I would lead the effort to grow those reserves, you know, of our budget. And the third is infrastructure revitalization and refocus on master plan. We love shiny new things in Irvine. But now we're at the age now where we need to look at the older neighborhoods and make, focus on revitalization. And those will be my top three priorities.
Thank you so much. Same question for Anthony.
Thank you so much for the question. Certainly, public safety is at the top of my list. It's always been at the top of my list. You can see me visiting our officers at DUI checkpoints at their open houses, supporting them in whatever way I think I can. I, the city is representative of the Orange County Fire Authority, making sure that our communities are protected not only from just accidents, but wildfires. That's why I enjoy the support of our rank-and-file police officers and firefighters for reelection. Secondly, it's expensive to live in Irvine. We all know that. And so your tax dollars that fund city government, we want to make sure that we're spending them to the best of our ability and getting you the government, one, that you deserve, and two, that you can afford. So there are a number of programs that we need to be looking at to reduce costs, one of which being returning your user utilities tax to you. And thirdly, Irvine's a great community, but not because of what's happening at city hall. It's what's happening in the community organizations. So we need to do a better job of reaching out to our nonprofits.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you all for your question, your answers to question number one. So next, the next question will be answered by Kathleen first. Crime is on the rise. What plans do you have to keep our city safe?
Well, I am very supportive of safety in Irvine. I actually sit on the Crime Survivors Council. This is a nonprofit based in Orange County that is dedicated to supporting victims of crimes. And they work very closely with the Irvine Police and other police officers to ensure safety. I also believe in continuing to our strong Irvine police force. Right now, the Irvine Police Force is having a really tough time recruiting new police officers. We are trying to recruit the very best police officers in the state to maintain our high standards of public safety. We need to make sure that we offer salaries that can draw those top light police officers. We also need to make sure that they can live here. So I'd like to offer workforce housing to police. We want to have the police who guard our community actually living in our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Same question for Scott.
Thank you. We're fortunate to live in Turtle Rock where there are only three ways into our village. And so if anything happened in Turtle Rock, the police could quickly close it off. So, but that's not true in many of our villages in Irvine. And the truth is Irvine is growing. When we moved here, there were 140,000 people. Now there are 310,000. And in the coming years, many more. And so our police force has to grow along with the population. That means maintaining funding for equipment. It means, it means redoubling efforts to hire a diverse police off, police force that can communicate and connect with all the many different communities within our city. It means focusing extra attention on areas that become high crime. Having said all that, let's remember Irvine is the safest large city in the United States.
Thank you so much. Same question for Navid.
Thank you. We need to ensure that our police is adequately funded and that they receive the best training possible. And I've I've personally seen the rise in crime. I have seen street racing increase at night. I have seen donuts being dead at night. I see whenever I drive by an intersection, there's a chance I might see black tire marks on the road. And that is due to the donuts that are being dead at night. Currently, the Irvine Police Department has a ratio of point eight four police officers per 1,000 residents. But we need to get that ratio back up to one police officer per 1,000 residents to ensure that our cities can be as safe as it can be. We also need to make sure that we have increased night patrols as that is where, when a majority of crimes take place. Street racing usually takes place at night. Donuts usually take place at night, robberies and home break-ins. Thank you.
Thank you, Navid. Okay, same question for John.
All right, thank you. So first and foremost, when it comes to public safety, I believe that we need to talk about public safety more than election time or when something tragic happens. So I'm a big believer in public safety. I believe it's the foundation of any sort of city. I imagine it as a foundation of a home. You can't build pillars or a frame on top of the home unless you have a strong foundation. That's public safety. So specifics, right now Irvine has a point eight, for example, police officer for every 1,000 people that live here. National average is well above one. We need to increase the police force and to make sure that we're staffed up properly. I met with Chief Kent, had a very long conversation with them. He wants to invest in technology for the future. And so I'm a big advocate of that. So it's not just about adding manpower. It's about making sure that we're investing in technology. And the third is training, to be able to back them for the training. All these things coming together will ensure that we stay, we stay, Scott, for example, the largest safe city in America. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Same question for Anthony.
Again, I enjoy the support of our rank-and-file police officers because I've been out there with them, whether it's ride-alongs, open houses, different activities that they're going through every day. I've never worn a badge on my chest. I've never worn a, gone on my holster or hip. So it's hard for me to understand what they go through day in and day out. But I have a better understanding, having spent so much time with our officers and sergeants and other police personnel throughout the years. I'm a big supporter of CERT Community Police Academy, IDEC, all of our police volunteer auxiliaries that our citizens can participate in. I've been a part of the major discussions that we've had between the Fire Authority and the Police Department about bringing your regional training facility to Irvine. That's funded. And I've also led the charge on creating the city's property crimes task force as well as paving the way for many cities in Orange County to address catalytic converter theft.
Thank you so much. Same question for Larry.
Thank you. When I was last mayor way back in the year 2000, I set out to have the city reach an admirable goal, which is to become the number one safest city of our size in the entire United States of America. And by the time we got to the year 2004, we had achieved that. We were, as measured by FBI statistics on violent crime, America's safest city. We've maintained that proud honor for all these years because we have invested. We've invested in trained officers and the continuing training of officers. We've invested in a modernization of our techniques and approaches to preventing crime as well as controlling it. If elected, I plan to continue in that tradition. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. All right, thank you all for your answers to question number two. Now we'll proceed with to question number three. And the first person answering is Scott Hanson. The question goes, what is your position on district elections? Should Irvine change to district elections? Please explain.
Yes. Irvine should change to district elections. Our city is built on a village concept where we are where we are one city, but we have several unique villages with unique characters, with unique characteristics. Our currents, our city has grown from a quaint town of a few villages to a large city. And our council is the same size as it was years ago. I'm finding as a candidate myself, the cost of running in a citywide election is enormous. One mailer, just one mailer can cost sixty cents when you include postage, and there are tens of thousands of voting households. So it limits our election system to only the wealthiest candidates, or only the big money candidates, as I call it. Uh, I strongly support district elections, and I think we need it sooner than later.
Thank you so much. Same question for Navid.
Thank you. I strongly support district elections. As Scott was, uh, saying, we are built on a village foundation. And each village has different needs. So we need one council member per each, or either every district, I say every village, or per multiple villages. Since I live in an older part of Irvine, I don't, I don't personally feel the the problems that the newer, uh, residents of Irvine feel in newer homes since since I don't live there, but around in my community, my homes are, our homes are the same. Are, we're built in the same, uh, time period. So I would push to to ensure, uh, we have district elections as well as I would actually go further. I would make sure that our council keeps growing at every census so that we can do this and never have to worry about it again. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Same question for John.
All right, thank you. Um, you know, in regards to district elections, my answer is I'm open to it. Uh, I'm probably more open to the expansion of city council to seven, and let me tell you why I'm saying this, because I'm very business minded, so I need more facts. Um, the premise of district elections is that, uh, certain segments of the population in geographic areas are disenfranchised, specifically minorities. Uh, Irvine being the great diverse city and integrated city that we are, I'm not sure if we have this problem. And so the premise of calling for district elections, uh, could have the reverse effect potentially. So when I say I'm open to it, we ought to study it. We need to hire professional demographers and then make sure that we are indeed have this problem that we're speaking of. Uh, Mayor Farah Khan's book of three AAPI members that are currently sitting on the council. Uh, look at how many of us are running that are not, you know, um, you know, are minorities. So I, I just want to make sure that we, we do this the correct way, but I'm open to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Same question for Anthony.
Thank you. I'm also open to it. I want to learn more about it. Um, so far, uh, when we've had these discussions, um, it's sort of been, here's the proposal and we have to act on it tonight. And I don't think that you should fundamentally change the way uh, our city government has worked for years and years and years, uh, based on one meeting. And so I know that our council came out of that discussion saying, let's explore it for the future. Um, for me personally, um, I've been able to enjoy visiting with residents and homeowners and businesses from all over the city, uh, sometimes in one day, stretching from Portola Springs to Turtle Ridge and other locations. Uh, there's this idea that if you have districts, that that's your council member. Um, you now, as a voter, have the opportunity to vote for city council members every two years. Uh, if we go into districts and you like or don't like your council members, you won't have that opportunity for every four years. And so those are a lot of the patterns and, and, um, logistics that I think we need to work through before making a decision.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Same question for Larry.
I've long supported district elections. As a city of three hundred thousand people, we ought to expand the council to seven members altogether, a mayor and six districts, each of about fifty thousand people. Candidate, uh, Scott Hanson, I think, uh, put his finger on something very, very important. With smaller districts, with a smaller constituency, the opportunity to represent those people faithfully and to fund a campaign where you can actually meet each and every person in your constituency is a fundamental step forward for our local representative democracy. I must take exception to, uh, Mr. Quo's, uh, remarks that this was a quick effort at the end to get it on the ballot. No, I've been pushing for it for two years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Same question for Kathleen.
Yes, I'm very much in favor of district elections and expanding the city council, uh, with the important caveat that whatever district maps we draw, it will be done in such a way to not reduce the diversity of city council members on the council. Um, I've seen draft maps. I think it is possible to do that. Um, I'll tell you right now, just with the experience of running for office, it is very, very hard right now to run for city council without being independently wealthy or having a lot of flexible time or being funded by special interests like local developers, car dealerships, and so forth. Um, if we have district elections, this will make running for city council much more accessible, and I think we'll have a wider range of people on city council. Uh, that can be only a good thing. Um, in addition, you Irvine is one of the largest cities in California without more than five city council members. Uh, we really do need to expand the council. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And I also want to thank all of you for your excellent answers. Uh, at this time, we'll move to your closing statements. And as mentioned, we will go with the reverse order, so we will go with Anthony first, and you'll have two minutes.
Thank you, Chair. Again, it has been such a privilege, um, really of a lifetime to serve the community of Irvine, the community that I grew up in, uh, for the last term. It's been a pleasure to help deliver, uh, for our residents. Um, there was one instance where I got an email from a local mom, uh, had a concern over an issue, wasn't sure whether she should go to the city or the HOA. We actually got her, um, issue resolved within a few hours, and she sent me the nicest email. And in that email, it said that my reputation, your reputation, uh, for caring for Irvine, uh, did not disappoint. We've been able to deliver for our families with regard to local youth sports, with regards to some of the lowest COVID, uh, infection rates in the region, with keeping Irvine safe and partnering with our law enforcement, uh, professionals, with dealing with, uh, businesses and helping them survive and thrive throughout the pandemic. Um, I've gone through, uh, and been appointed by the city council to serve on the fire board. There are twenty-five board members, and I think that they think I'm a reasonable enough and thoughtful enough that just within that second year, uh, I became vice chair of that board. And as vice chair of the board, we've looked at the finances, we've looked at the operations, and, uh, those are the men and women who helped keep, uh, Irvine safe in two thousand twenty, uh, right in the midst of that last election, where almost a third of our city, uh, was evacuated. I really also, uh, want to continue my efforts and theme of being a taxpayer advocate, really watching, uh, how much things cost, whether it's our investments in, in public transportation, in infrastructure, uh, in contracts, uh, it's your money. Uh, and we really want to make sure that we make community investments, but again, that we want to deliver to you a government that, uh, that lives up to your standards, but also a government that you can afford. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Now let's hear from John.
All right, thank you, everybody. Um, I want to read you a quick quote that sits at, um, any desk that I sit on, whether I'd work at home. And the quote reads like this, "There is no limit to what a man can do or what he can or where he can go if he doesn't mind who gets the credit." Um, it's a quote by Ronald Reagan. I live by this quote. I hope to be able to work with my fellow council members if elected. Uh, this race isn't about me. I won't be taking the credit. It takes three votes to get anything done. My race is all about the residents, uh, the seniors, veterans, families with kids, young professionals, and everyone. I really do believe Irvine is a great city. Like I said before, the sky isn't falling. Uh, we love this city, and my goal is to keep Irvine, Irvine for generations. Um, it's also, I like to hope it's also why I'm endorsed by public safety, uh, the business community and tax fighters like OC Sheriff, um, Orange County firefighters has endorsed me, Orange County Business Council, and the Association of OC Taxpayers. Um, and I'll read you another quote, which I love, and it, then this quote is actually by Harry Truman. And, you know, it sits on his, it sat on his desk, and it said, "The buck stops here." So should you elect me, should you vote for me, hold me accountable. Hold me accountable, and I will make sure that not only I earn your vote, but they, I, I earn your confidence. I've been walking a lot, um, what you, what you don't see right now with my jacket and nice shirt on is that I'm wearing casual pants on this Zoom because I just came from knocking on doors for three hours, hurried, scurried to get ready. And I'm out there talking to the residents. Look, we need to talk about the real issues. It's not about being Republican, Democrat, purple, green, whatever color you are. It's about us coming together and making sure that we are able to serve this city as residents first. Irvine residents first. If we can do that, we're going to be, all be able to work together and keep this city great. I truly believe that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, John. Next, let's hear from Navid.
Thank you, and thank you for having us on today as panelists. We need to make sure that we fight against especially what's, what has been troubling us as a lifelong resident. I've, I personally know, and I've felt the many issues that are surrounding us. And that is why I decided to run for city council, to fix to fix the issues that we are facing, as well as fight for the people that have not been able to have their voices heard by others, as well as the people that haven't, have been ignored by our other council members. We need to start by getting rid of the COX communications monopoly that has troubled Irvine ever since internet service, ever since broadband internet service has been provided in Irvine, especially with the amount of people working from home these days. We need to make sure that they have a viable, affordable, and competitively priced internet connection that they can rely on, and that they know if it provides, if it gives them trouble, that they can always switch to another provider. We need to give relief to the people that are facing pain at the pump by repealing the sales tax on gasoline. We need to, um, get the recent uptick in crime under control by making sure our police force is adequately funded and making sure that we have our, we correct the ratio of police officers to residents. So that is what I will do as your council member. So please go to my website, navidforirvine, that's the number for irvine.com to learn more about the platform, and vote for me this November. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Next, please welcome Scott Hanson.
Thank you, Chair. It's an honor to be here. You know, Irvine, in my, in my mind, is in great shape. Our best, best days are ahead of us. And hundreds of thousands of people and institutions all around the globe agree with that. We're an international city of opportunity, innovation, tolerance, and environmentalism. Put me on the Irvine City Council, and I'll work to support our Irvine Public Schools, ensure Irvine remains America's safest city, plan for housing, that our own kids who grow up in Irvine, since they're a baby, can aspire to own someday if they go off to college and try to plan their careers. Right now, both of our kids, we asked them to take courses in personal finance in their college, and they did. And my daughter looked up from the table and said, "Dad, I want to be a vet, but I can't afford" to situation that tens of thousands of families, uh, in Irvine are facing. And we have a golden opportunity now because the state is requiring Irvine to plan for tens of thousands of new housing units. And I want to make sure that our developers dedicate a lot of those housing units to units that our own kids, young professionals, can aspire to own someday and move back to Irvine. And I want to make Irvine a world-class city of public art. We have incredible communities here with a diversity of experiences. We have incredible talent and, and we have a wealthy business sector and family foundations that can pay for it. I'm proud. Mayor Khan, put me on the Irvine Transportation Commission, and I would be honored to have your vote. Thank you for the privilege to be here today.
Thank you so much. Next, please hear from Dr. Kathleen Tassider.
Hi, thank you. So people from all over the world move to Irvine for a world-class education. They know it is a way to give their children a leg up in the world. And so who better to care for and expand that legacy than a educator? I have been teaching your kids for almost twenty years at UCI. I have the experience and the knowledge to know how to leverage the power that is UCI to help further the education of our children. Um, I also will advocate for safety as a, um, member of the Crime Survivors Council. Um, I will make sure that you have clean air by shutting down the All-American asphalt plant. I'll work for bikeable and walkable neighborhoods to help cut down on traffic pollution, to reduce automobile pollution. I'm a scientist. I believe in looking at the evidence and the data. And so I know that no matter how many bike lanes we have in the city, no matter how safe most of the streets are, if there's even one intersection that is dangerous for bikers, they will not bike to school. We need to make sure that our kids can bike to school or their activities in safety by installing protected bike lanes and pedestrian bridges. I am someone who is running because I want to care, but I want to take care of the community. I will not accept corporate donations. I am not working with the developers. I am not bought. I cannot be bribed. I will make each vote with the mindset that I need to help the Irvine community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kathleen. And next, let's welcome Larry Egan.
Thank you. Having the, uh, opportunity to be this afternoon's last speaker, I want to again thank our wonderful hosts and the wonderful sponsors for making this forum possible. This is an excellent way for us to be able to communicate with the people of Irvine and speak about the aspirations that we share. It's been my honor and privilege to serve for many years on the city council, on and off, serving our community, including ten years as mayor. During those previous years that I've served, we have actually managed to create the most remarkable city, in my judgment, in the United States of America. And we've done it within a fifty-year span. A truly remarkable, master-planned community that has brought so many benefits to all of us. I have been a part of that history, but I want to be a part of its future as well. So I ask for the voters to once again, please, grant me the honor of serving you, the privilege of serving you, the privilege of being able to call us home to our most fundamental values in this city. Not only diversity and inclusion, but planning and master planning for all of these wonderful streams of benefits to come into our city's plan. We've kind of lost track of the master planning process in recent years, both applied to the Great Park and applied to the city at large. We've been doing too much planning for developers and not enough for the residents. I ask for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much, Larry. I, I will, I want to, um, on behalf of the, um, all the organizers for today's forum, uh, want to thank you, uh, all of the candidates for the city council, um, for being here today. Uh, at this time, I'd like to invite all of you to, uh, turn on your camera. At this time, I'd like to invite all of you to turn on your camera so we could take a group, virtual group picture together. And I also would like to ask Principal Yulang Chang to also join our group picture.